The Kipsey Zoning Board of Appeals, would you please rise and pledge.
Oh.
Pledge to lead to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. For the record, one of our regular members, James LaRosa, is not able to be here tonight. So Phyllis Capone, our alternate, will be a regular voting member for all the items. For those that are new to the procedures here, the meeting will be divided into two halves. During the first half, we'll hold public hearings on each of the applications before us. We'll take them in the order in which they're found on the agenda, and a copy of the agenda is available in the little black tray next to our counsel's desk. During the public hearing, we'll ask each applicant to come forward, to be sworn in. All testimony before the ZBA has to be sworn testimony. And then we'll ask the applicant to give us a very brief overview of what the application's about, why you're here. After that, members of the board will have an opportunity to ask questions, gather further information about the application. When all of the board members have had an opportunity to ask questions, the floor will be open for comments from the general public. Again, if you wish to speak on an item, you should come forward, be sworn in, and then make your comments. When we've heard from everyone, we'll close the public hearing and move on to the next item. When we've covered all the items, we'll go back to the top of the agenda for the deliberation phase. And during this part of the meeting, there's no further public input, though you're certainly welcome to stay and listen to the deliberations. All right. Start in item number one, the Cafe Con Leech at 10 Main Street in New Hamburg. I should just say that at the request of the applicant, we'll be adjourned this item until the November meeting, but if there's anyone here that wishes to speak on that, you can do so now. Okay? Not seeing anyone. Is there a motion to adjourn item number one to our November meeting? Let's see, that's November 18th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item number two, Burlington, doing businesses, or it's, Imagine One Industries, doing businesses, Burlington, at 2576 South Road.
I have some additional drawings that weren't attached for the pylon panel, just showing the existing.
Wonderful, wonderful. Just start them around.
An existing photo of what's, of the Toys R Us.
Okay, so if you'd just state your name for the record.
Elise N'Pula, VP of Sales for Image One Industries.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Very well. Okay, welcome, and do you want to kind of start us off with what you're planning?
Yes, Burlington Co. Factory is looking to move into the old Toys R Us vacant space currently, and we're looking for relief from the same signage as they had previously. This variance doesn't transfer with the property, it's with the owner, that's why we're here before you today.
Okay. And let's just start moving these along.
In the pylon panel, we're just looking to reface that existing panel with new faces, nothing else.
Do you mind just speaking a little closer to the microphone?
Sure, we just looked at refacing the existing tenant panel, we're not looking at, you know, modifying it in size or anything.
Okay, so, let me see if I've got this right. So the wall sign you want, the main wall sign, is 402.92 square feet?
Correct.
Okay. And then there's the smaller, which basically, what, just a little logo sign?
It's just a non-illuminated right at the doorway.
16 square feet.
Correct.
Okay. And then you want to take the existing Toys R Us tenant sign and just put new panels on it?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, Paul?
Do you have an idea about the square, the area of the facade of the building, what that will be?
If you turn to some of the last pages in the building, you can see they're going to do similar to what Toys R Us had, but aluminum composite material, so it'll be a prefinished aluminum. And that's where the letters would get attached to.
Good.
Okay, but do you have an idea about what the square footage of the facade of the building will be when you're done?
I can get that information, we can get that information over to you.
Okay. Then, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Art? Why do you, why do you need 400 square feet? Because that's a captive, you can't see it from the road, you're gonna have the double panel sign at the road.
This is kind of our standards and what they do nationwide, and if you look at what's allowed per code, how tiny that looks on our facade, it just doesn't look proportionate. If you look at what the Toys R Us had, we feel we're very comparable to what they had.
I understand that, but again, go back to the question, why do you need it? You know, what the company feels is their must-have is really immaterial.
For visibility.
Yeah, but once you're in the parking lot, you're gonna see that, that's gonna stand out. If you went to the mid-size one, it's gonna stand out like crazy, once you're in the parking lot. You know, it just, because we try to keep it to as small a variance as possible, obviously. And if you go up and down Route 9, if you go to the old Burlington.
Old is set back off the road fairly.
Yeah, but you can't see it from the road, you can't see the building until you're in the parking lot. That's the thing. And you're gonna have, where the Toys R Us sign was on both sides, you're gonna have that which is very visible from either way, either direction on Route 9. It's always been a very visible sign. I'm not trying to give you a hard time, but we try to keep it, no matter what, no matter what companies say when they come in, that we need, we need, we need, but, you know, we as a board need to protect the town.
Correct, and it's just visibility, and, you know, what our standards are, and what, you know, that's what my client's trying to go for, and keep it, you know, their brand looking the same from location to location.
Right, you gave us three renderings.
It's.
Small, medium, and large, essentially, is what you gave us.
Correct, that's what we were asked to provide.
Right, and that's, I appreciate that, that's very helpful. So if I ask you, could you, I don't know if I'm out of place, but could you live with the medium?
I don't, I'd have to give it back to the client to see if that'd be a deal breaker or not for them.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what is the square, square footage area of the medium size? Yeah.
248?
Yeah.
Which is not quite, being over halfway.
Right.
I'm good, Jim. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm done.
Paul, you have an?
Nope, now I found it.
Yeah, okay. All right. Okay, I too thought the 100-square-foot sign that the code calls for is too small for a building that size. But I also think the 450 square feet is, is too big. That, and, and I think several of us that went out on the field trip noticed that because of the stores, there's a U-Haul, there's a post office, a Dunkin' Donuts, okay, the stores right along Route 9 mean that you really can't see the new Burlington store from Route 9. So, but you can see the, you will be able to see the new Burlington sign that's on the pylon at the roadside. So, so then people know, okay, this is, this is the right shopping center to go to Burlington, they'll go in. At that point, the only function of the sign in the front, on the facade of the building, is to steer people to the, to the right building. So they're not looking at it from that far away, and, and I think the medium-sized sign will be certainly visible from anywhere in that, that parking area. People will know what's there. The little logo, I'm okay with that, it kind of signals where the front door is, okay.
That logo is not illuminated also, it's just a pin mount.
Yeah, but obviously during the day, and, and in the evening, when the storefronts are illuminated, people will be able to see that, so. I regard that as almost as more as a kind of a directional sign, which, which is fine. So, so I think, and, and I also want to follow up on something that, that Art raised, and that's that, according to the, to the regulations of the ZBA, we're, we are to grant the minimum variance necessary. And so I would, I would certainly support the, the 250-square-foot, I would have a real difficulty with the, with the larger one. Then the final thing, right now, the, the pylon sign just stands on the two poles, there's, and the code calls for a decorative base. And more and more, up and down Route 9, people are putting these in, and they, they really look good. And so I would kind of urge you to consider putting some kind of a decorative base, I think you can, you can just drive up and down Route 9. Often they're stone, sometimes there's some plantings in there. It just makes it look, you know, nicer. So I would, I would urge that. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No, I have no questions.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the Burlington application at 2576 South Road? Okay. Anything else from the, any other questions from the board?
No, but we didn't get anything from the county, is that right?
No, we did not. Okay, I, I, has somebody explained to you?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So unfortunately, I know you're in the middle of construction, you'd like to finish this yesterday if you could. And so I really apologize for our not being able to act on this. At the same time, I think I'm, I don't want you walking out of here completely uncertain and frustrated about this. I don't know, could, I don't know, can members of the board nod or whatever, but I?
Straw vote?
But I, yeah, we can, kind of a straw vote, I mean, how many would be prepared to support their kind of middle applications?
Yes, sure.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so I think.
Back with the landscaped monument.
The pylon?
The pylon.
Add a decorative base?
The base, yeah, with a landscaped base.
Plus the medium size on the building.
Right, and then, but other, but otherwise.
And is there anyone that has an objection? Would you also support the second, the logo sign?
Sign? I don't have a problem with that.
No problem.
Fine.
Yeah, I think really that's, like I said, I, I looked at that almost as a kind of showing you where the front door is.
Okay.
So that's, that's fine, so.
Paul, do you still want the information about the size of the facade, the area? Because the app?
Yeah, just to get an idea.
Just for the record.
Sure.
So that can come in either by email or mail, or however you want to get it to Sonia, so that the board will have it for the next meeting?
Perfect.
Yeah.
So this applicant drove from far away, could the board waive her appearance at the next meeting unless you think there is something that she needs to appear for, for further discussion?
Unless she has a total disagreement with her.
Yeah.
I'm good with it.
Well, she'll get a copy of the, the county comments, yeah, and so if she's.
Right, so you'll certainly have the opportunity to come next time if you want to, but I'd like the board to acknowledge that she doesn't need to appear if, unless there's further information that you need to provide in person.
I don't think so.
She'll talk to us, they'll send, Burlington will send us something as to what the pylon base rendering would look like?
Correct, yes, we'll send you something. We'll send something over.
Phyllis, you have to cover the microphone.
Yeah, okay, all right. And, and so, yeah, if we hear from you that you're okay with the decorative base, and you're okay with the roughly 250-square-foot wall sign, I don't think we, yeah, I don't see any reason why you need to appear, certainly can, but.
Okay, great. All right, great, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right, so is there a motion to adjourn item number two to the November meeting?
So moved.
Second.
And that's November what?
18th.
18th, okay, November 18th. Okay, motion made in second to adjourn item two, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And just, I note that it's a listed action, they've submitted a EAF short form, so that will be no problem. Okay. Item number three, Valley Christian Church at 657 Schaefer Road.
Okay, if you'd state your name for the. Hi, good evening, my name is Joe Plouffe from Tinkelman Architecture.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Very well.
Okay, so tell us what you're planning to do.
Here, on behalf of the Valley Christian Church, they're looking to adaptive reuse the existing building, it was a former kids' gymnasium on Schaefer Road there, and they want to turn it into a new church or worship center. Currently, the existing building is encroaching over the side yard setbacks on the north portion of the property and the south. We're looking for relief on those setbacks. We're not encroaching any further into those setbacks. And then the other variances we're looking for is a front yard setback for parking. Currently, there exists parking in the front yard, and we'd like to reutilize those parking spaces to maximize our parking count. And then also in the rear, we are proposing new parking in the rear and side yard setback. That portion of the property is towards the back and is, is shielded by landscape to the adjacent neighbors on the property behind it, and then to the south property, it butts up to existing parking lot as well.
So this, it's been decided that the planning board has discretion over the parking setbacks, and so that's another board's, so what's before this board only is, are the two side yard setbacks, the north and south, and the board doesn't have to be concerned with the parking in the front yard, because that's part of the planning board discretion?
Okay.
Okay.
We did get conditional approval last week from the planning board as well.
Okay.
Yes, and the planning board also issued a neg deck, so for purposes of secret, we're fine, this is an enlisted action, coordinated review.
Hmm, okay, says type two here, but.
Yes.
Okay, so the planning board?
Planning board was a lead agency, that was something that.
But they issued a?
And they issued a neg deck last week.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, it solves that problem, okay. Right, Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Paul?
Just so I'm clear, the existing building, you're not moving the existing building, these are the setback problems that exist, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Art?
I've got no problems.
At one point in the application, I'm not even sure quite where, you made mention that there's a demolition permit.
Yes.
And what is that for?
That's just interior, selected interior demolition only.
Okay, and what, and you're redoing the front and back entrances?
Yes, we're proposing two new entrances on the front and back, that's approximately 1,700 square feet each.
Okay, okay. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Okay, is there any, anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application from the Valley Christian Church at 657 Schaefer Road? Hearing none, there's no further questions from the board, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Item number four, Christopher Rogers, 19 sites terrace, and Paul, you indicated you're gonna be recusing yourself from this one, okay, so.
Good evening, my name is Ray Nelson, I'm the architect that is working with Chris on this project. He bought the building only 11 months ago, right, 11? 11 months ago, assuming that the, this basement space had an illegal.
Okay, we'll, we'll, time out for a minute to, so we can get sworn in.
We just need to swear you in before.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
One second here. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do swear that, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay, go ahead.
So help me God. So anyway, he bought this building, assuming that this apartment in the cellar, in the basement space was legal, so he was occupying the basement and renting out the first floor of this single-family residence, which is legally actually a single-family residence. A fire happened downstairs, the fire department came and put out the fire, exposing the fact that it was occupied as an apartment. So now we're in the process of trying to get this legal, so in order to accomplish that task, well, it had to be before this board, but a couple of things have to change in the, in the, in the space, there's three, essentially three space, three rooms in the space, in the cellar space, basement space, a living room, a bedroom, and a kitchen. The kitchen had a, a window that made that portion of the, of the apartment legal, but the other two rooms, the windows were too small, too high. So we're, we have a building permit application in process to, to change those windows, to make them egress windows. In addition to that, you know, we have to do a couple of minor changes to the ceiling height to get a seven-foot ceiling, but other than that, I, I understand this is, this is a special use permit, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, so, I'm not sure what, if you have any questions for me, I'm not sure what else to tell you, it's, it meets all the, on the plans I've given you, it meets all the requirements. We have enough parking, it's, it's a small enough portion of the building, it's a secondary space, it's, it's not equal to the apartment upstairs.
Well, wait, the, the apartment in the basement is smaller than the one upstairs?
Yes.
So the, so the main?
The main portion of the house is a.
Is the upstairs?
Correct.
Right, okay, all right. And it doesn't matter whether the owner lives in the upstairs or the downstairs apartment? Okay, all right. Okay, I have, I have one technical question, and then we'll, we'll get into the others. There was some discrepancy about the total square footage of the apartment. Okay, on the application, on the handwritten, it says that it's 549 square feet, and I did the arithmetic.
Okay.
And it should be 640 something.
Okay, you're probably right, I, I draw the plans unaware of, anyway, I didn't even walk around the backside of the building, so I was unaware that there was a, there's all an addition off the backside of the house when I was there the first time, so the plans I submitted to you weren't accurate. So I think the application went in with inaccurate plans, I resubmitted plans and maybe didn't change the application to show that, that change, if that's what you're referring to?
Okay, that, that could be. On, on the, on the plan that I have.
Hopefully the new plans you have are accurate, I'm not sure about the, the written part of the application.
Okay, on this one, I believe it's on the second page, yeah, on the second page, you've got total building floor area, 2,963 square feet, apartment floor area, 575 square feet, and I, and then in, in another part, you, you talk about the areas being 641.
Uh-huh.
Okay, 641, I think is correct, 641 meets the, the code requirements, so I, so I'm just.
Sounds, sounds like I made an error.
I, I, I think it's a typo.
Yeah, okay, sure enough.
But I just wanted to.
I think I have each room noted as to how many square feet, so you, yeah, if you add those up.
Yeah, and I just, I just added them up, and.
Yeah, the computer generates those square footages right off the plan, so I'm sure that's right, if you added them up, you're right.
Okay, all right, okay, so I just, I just didn't want that to be an issue somewhere down the line.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Paul, or no, Paul, you're recusing yourself, Art?
I've got no questions.
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry, no questions.
All right. When did the fire occur?
June 4th of?
This year.
This year.
This year.
Yeah.
Okay, do you, do you know, I, I looked up on Parcel Access, and the, the house was built in the 1946. Do you have any idea how long that apartment has been there?
It's been there, it's been there the whole time, since I, since I bought it, Hudson Valley Federal Credit, they grandfathered the apartment in, because they said it was, it was already there.
We, I don't know that we know when it was created.
Okay. Yeah, all right. Okay, I was, I was just wondering if it would fall under a legal, non-conforming, you know, a grandfathered use, but.
Yeah, I don't know, he's only owned it for 11 months, so.
Right, so it.
We probably don't know the history of the building.
Okay, okay. Larry, any questions?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Okay. Let's see, I'm just, I'm just quickly going through the, the criteria, and it appears to me that, meet them, and you, you listed them out on your, on your, okay, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 19 sites terrace? All right, seeing none? Any further questions from the board?
I'm good.
If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
A moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number five, Jennifer Pacetto, 29 Schoolhouse Lane.
Hi.
Hello, and your name, please?
Jen Pacetto.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay. Okay.
What am I looking to do?
Yeah.
So I put a pool up in my backyard with all the proper permits this summer, and then we went to put the deck in and got stalled because the property line is not 20 feet from where my house is. All I'm looking to do is extend off my house to meet the, the pool with decking. It's composite decking, and it's just under three-feet distance that I would need the variance for, again, not come any closer off my house, just straight off my house, so I'm not getting any closer than I already am, and the, that side that's closer to the neighbor is going to be a wall, a privacy wall.
Um, what, a?
Like a fence?
Fence of some kind?
Um, instead of just slats, like going this way, I'm gonna have the slats turned so that it's more wall-like.
Okay, when, what, what, six, five, six feet?
Um, I think, like, what's the, what's the standard height?
Typically sixty.
At the back, six to eight.
Yeah, along, along the, the side, yeah, it could be.
I don't think she's talking about a fence, you're talking about just.
It's not a fence, it's just the decking, instead of having like.
Oh, on the deck?
Instead of the deck just being like a railing to here, right, it's gonna be. Instead of the deck just being like a railing to here, right, it's going to be like a full wall.
So to be attached to the deck, not standing on it?
Attached to the deck.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, fine, all right. Okay, good. Christine?
No questions.
Paul?
No, just so, the drawing, has it indented a little bit from the house, but you're saying it's just going to be on the same line as the house?
It's on the same line as the house, yeah.
That's all.
No questions.
Okay. All right, so it's not going to be any closer to the property line than the house already is?
Correct.
Okay. Larry? Tony?
No questions.
Phyllis?
And the deck is how many feet off the ground?
It's not, it's not far off the ground.
Okay.
It's probably only knee height off the ground, and then again, it's usually a wall as opposed to railing.
Okay, thank you.
It's not like a second floor or anything like that. It's.
Yeah, okay. All right, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 29 Schoolhouse Lane? All right, seeing none. If there are no further questions, there are motion to close the public hearing.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, recusals? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Item number six. New angle construction for Raquel Fort, owner at 22 Robin Road. All right, if you just state your name, please?
Anthony Caruso.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, and you're representing the construction company?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So you want to just describe the project briefly?
Yep, so we're proposing to add a 14-foot, 3-inch deck by 11 feet out, connecting to their existing deck to tie it into the pool, set of stairs off of the upper deck down to the pool deck.
Okay. All right, now, and here, Mike and Lisa, if you'd help me out a little bit. The reason they need a variance is not for the deck itself, but the fact that that deck is now going to connect the house pool.
There's a code provision which allows, if it's independent of the house, it's allowed to be closer to the lot line. But because it's attached to the house, it now needs to meet the house setbacks.
Okay, which is 30 feet.
Right.
Okay. And so the pool right now is, I have a little hard time reading the diagram, to tell you the truth.
15 or 16?
Yeah, so the pool is.
So if you could see, you know, based on the overview, you can see that there is your existing deck there now, and the pool is directly behind that, almost centered of that deck.
Right.
Roughly 11 feet away from the edge of the existing deck. Back, towards the back of the property.
Okay, so if we're looking at the house from Robin Road.
Okay.
Okay. Then how far is the pool from the right-hand lot line, the side lot line?
It's roughly off the dimension that's here in the picture, because it's basically center of their existing deck right now, so I would say it's probably right around 17 feet, 18 feet, maybe.
Okay. All right. And then how far is the pool from the rear lot line? Again, as you're looking at it from.
That's where it gets closer, you know, and once again, just guessing by the sizes of, you know, the pool and that, I'm going to say 33 feet, maybe a little less than that.
Okay. So.
Or I'm sorry, I apologize, like, 25 feet.
25 feet.
Yeah, I'm just trying to do the math in my head really quick, the pool.
Okay. Okay. So, so basically. They need a variance for each of those side lot lines. Is that correct?
I'm looking at Tom's letter, and it only addresses the rear.
Okay. Part of the problem is, this is a corner lot, so there are two front yards, and these are two rear yards, and I'm not sure which is which here.
According to the drawing, it looks like the new deck is 50 feet from the lot line to the new deck.
To the new deck, right, right. And, okay, but again, what's confused me is that it's, really, the new deck is irrelevant here. The only thing the deck does is connect the pool and the house, so that they're now one unit.
Well, you need a permit for the deck, though, because it's closer to, well, so the pool is that rear lot line, but there may also be a variance required for the line, the lot line that's opposite Marie Court. Because whether that's a side or a rear lot line, it should be either 20 or 30 feet, and it looks like it's only 15.
Now, Marie Court, there's, it's like 100 and some feet.
Yeah.
Right, but the lot line opposite that.
Right, the other side.
Right.
Other side.
Where it's 15 feet, that should be either 20 or 30, depending on whether it's a rear line or a sideline.
Yeah, from my understanding, it was the rear property line that was the issue, being that because the deck is now attached to the existing and to the pool, that's what's creating the issue with the variance, like. So from my understanding, if the pool didn't exist, another deck could be added right there, no problem. But because it's being connected to the pool, it's putting it within, that's what I was being told originally.
Yes.
Unless I have a misunderstanding somewhere.
No, I believe that's correct.
Okay.
What I'm trying now to figure out is, what variances do we need for those two lot lines? And are you trying to determine whether we're considering the line on the right a rear line or a sideline?
Well, that's part of it, yeah.
So if it's a rear line, then we need a 15-foot variance there.
And if it's a sideline, you need a five. That's what I'm thinking.
Five foot.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would imagine it's a side being where the front door is.
Because you're on a corner, you're considered to have two fronts.
You aren't considered to have two fronts, but I don't know that you're necessarily considered to have two rear.
I don't know that we've ever had a situation where we're considered two rear.
Right, I think the front of the house, whatever side the house is facing is the front, and then a side lot is a side lot, but.
That's what we've usually done, and in this case, the front of the house is on Robin.
Right, so that would make the 15-foot side a side yard variance requiring a five-foot variance.
Okay, and then, since it's roughly 25 feet.
That's more than, the deck is more than 25 feet from the rear. You're counting the pool, too? I don't know that.
I think.
So the existing deck right now is 49 feet, and off of the edge of that deck, the new deck's only going to go out 11 feet, plus the pool.
Okay. So do we have to take into account the size of the pool? Or are we just talking about the decking?
That's what I was saying, they said that the pool counts because it's all becoming one unit now.
Okay, so that means, and now the pool is, you said, about 25 feet?
I was doing, that was pool and deck together.
Yeah.
You know, taken away from the 49, so yeah, I'd say it's like 25 feet.
So you need a variance of five feet?
Pretty much.
Okay. Are we okay on this now?
I mean, maybe just to be, to make sure we don't have an issue, as long as, maybe as long as we're comfortable with those distances from the two lines, if we need to.
Do you need to re-advertise for the side yard, side lot yard? Because it's less than the rear.
Well, technically, we only advertise for one variance, and the reason we only advertise for one variance was because the denial letter only addressed one of the yards. We do have something from the building department which says insufficient rear and side yard setbacks, but when we get to the zoning administrator's letter, it only addresses the rear yard setback. So.
Okay.
Right, that's the building, right, there's one from the building department which talks about rear and side, but unfortunately, when we get to the letter from the zoning administrator, it only addresses the rear.
Okay.
Okay, so Sonia is saying that Tom's interpretation was that because the new deck is set in further from the existing deck, it would not need the variance for that, but.
Well, and it's, and the pool, the new deck, and the existing deck are all further away from the side lot line than the house is.
True, but historically, if it's less than the minimum required, we have required people to get variances.
But now the house, deck, and pool are all one unit.
Right.
So it's all, so it's, so essentially, it's a legal, non-conforming house. Because it was built to a different code standard.
Yes, I don't disagree, the house is legal, non-conforming, but if you want to add a new deck onto an existing legal, non-conforming, you still would need a variance for the new deck.
Right.
So at minimum, tonight, the board can grant the variance. Is the pool existing, and you're looking to just put the deck in, correct?
The pool was just installed this summer.
Pool's there.
Yeah.
So that doesn't help with the.
Well, is this a case where we need to amend the application?
I'm wondering if the board has jurisdiction to address the side yard, since it was not referenced in the zoning administrator's letter, which is what gives the board the jurisdiction to deal with the property. So what the board definitely can do tonight is to address the rear yard setback. And the other problem is, the definition of a rear yard in the code is a yard extending along the full length of the rear lot between side lot lines, which doesn't really apply when you have two front, because there aren't then two sidelines.
Okay. Let's go ahead and act on the existing application.
Well, if he needs, if the building inspector decides that he needs a variance for this side yard, does he need to file another fee for a variance?
He would, well, I mean, the board, that's a discretion of the town. The town could waive the fee since it should have been something.
Hate to see them have to pay additional.
The problem that I have is, if the zoning administrator were to decide tomorrow morning that the side yard variance were needed, then you still can't build the deck to connect it to the pool, so.
And what about the existing deck? Looks like the existing deck is closer than 15 feet to the side yard lot line, so if we were going to be granting a variance tonight for the side yard line, wouldn't it have to be to the existing deck? Because the new deck looks like it's in a couple of feet or whatever. I can't tell.
It is about a foot in, maybe 16 inches at most.
All right.
Well, the question is, when the existing deck was built, was it a conforming deck, or did it have a variance? And if it was a conforming deck, then it is now a grandfathered, non-conforming deck, if it were built at the time not conforming. Do you know how long the deck's been on the house?
Uh, no, it was definitely done by the previous homeowners before Raquel.
I mean, the board has two options tonight. You can act on what's before you, and if the zoning administrator stays consistent with his determination that a variance wasn't needed for the side lot line, then the applicant can proceed and build their deck. I don't think, I'm not comfortable with the board acting on a side yard variance when the zoning, we don't have a determination from the zoning administrator that it's needed.
Okay, well, then I propose that we go ahead with the application as it's before us.
Jim?
And then.
Is there some way that we can recommend that they not have to pay the fees again? Is that within our?
I think for the applicant's perspective, it's probably more the 30 days that they would have to wait until November 18th, or less than 30 days, but to come back. Because if the zoning administrator were to change his opinion, then it would require another appearance before the sport and another variance. So it's probably more the time delay than it would be the, but it's possible that the zoning administrator adheres to his original decision that there is no side yard variance required, and then.
In which case, they could just go ahead.
Right.
Which I think, yeah, all right. Again, I mean, I hate to hold things up over what looks like.
Their pool's already closed. I don't think they mind.
Yeah, well, okay. Okay, let's see, Christine, did you have any questions? We got sort of.
Yeah.
I tracked on the technicalities here.
So I guess, so they're looking for a five-foot variance?
No, they're looking for the, in the rear from the pool to the rear, once you're attaching it all together, you need the variance from the pool to the rear yard, which is required to be 30 feet. So it's, and according to this, according to Tom's measurement, he said it's an 11-foot area variance is needed, that there were 19 feet. This says 18, but when he went out, he said it was 19. So to be on the conservative side, he figured an 11-foot.
Cover it, yeah.
Okay, that's all.
Okay. Paul?
No, no questions.
Art?
Questions.
Okay, I'm done.
Actually, I do have a question. Will you plan on doing it this season?
Honestly, probably not. It's like, kind of getting to that point.
Okay.
So the board then has two options if the applicant is not in a rush. If we think that the zoning administrator may change his mind, it would probably be easier to keep this public hearing open, and rather than having to re-advertise, I think the advertising was probably close enough, because we mentioned the pool and the deck, and the fact that it may need two variances instead of one to a layperson, I think it's the same notice provision. But we would need clarification from Tom. Otherwise, if we close, then we need to republish, renotice.
Okay, so you're suggesting we adjourn this, have the zoning administrator have another look at it, and then?
Just give us confirmation that no side yard variance is needed.
Okay.
That's probably the cleanest.
Okay. All right, so, seem okay? Okay. Larry, you got any questions?
No questions.
Okay, Phyllis?
No questions.
Okay. All right, so. Oh, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 22 Robin Road? Okay, here, seeing none. All right, based on advice of our counsel, I move that we adjourn item number six to the November 18th meeting, and that we refer this to the zoning administrator for clarification on the side lot.
Second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, so, item number six now is adjourned. Okay.
Do you need me to stay still, or?
Hmm?
You need me to stay?
No.
No.
Great, thank you.
Nope.
Unless you want to.
Okay. Item number seven, Joseph and Eileen Hands, Seventeen West Cedar Street. Good evening. And your name, sir?
I'm Joseph Hands.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Very well.
Okay, um, I guess what it's, an issue is a driveway, so if you want to explain why that's.
I, I had some tripping hazards in the, all the pathways and, pardon me, and I thought the best route to fix that was just the asphalt, everything. So while I had him there, I was interested in just expanding a driveway going towards my front lawn, it's a detached garage, so the area is in front of that detached garage, so I expanded the driveway six feet towards my yard. And as I stated, I don't know if everybody read it, but I do apologize, I didn't realize I was doing anything wrong. And I wouldn't have done it, and I had two contractors, neither of whom advised me that I could need a permit or variance, so. I would not have gone ahead with that if I, I wasn't trying to do anything, you know, like I'm a sly or anything. So I, I expanded that additional six feet, it's actually proportionate to where the garage is and what was already existing on the left side, and I just pushed it over a little bit on the right side, it's a busy street, and sometimes it's like, I thought it would provide an opportunity to maybe even make a U-turn in the driveway to pull out, but, and then even to pull in, it's a a busy street on Cedar Street.
Okay, all right, Christine?
So you expanded it on the right side, looking at the two, at the detached garages, you expanded it on the right, but on the left, that was existing?
That was already existing, correct, yes.
No other questions.
Paul?
What's the total width of the driveway?
I don't know, I would say the garage must be, what are they, twenty, and then maybe, I guess, an additional ten and ten on each side at this point, I would think.
So you think it's like forty feet wide?
At this point, I would say so, yes.
Okay, and who did, you said you got two estimates, who did work?
I actually have the receipts here, the proposals of, I forgot his name, Sorelli. And I also had a, I can present these to you if you'd like, Briggs, and neither of whom, you know, informed me that, because I asked them both for the same. So neither of them were, made me aware that I was potentially doing anything wrong, I mean, I'm not trying to push blame on anybody else, but I, I was just pleading ignorance into the.
All right, and when was it done?
Um, August.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, all right. The curb cut is also wider on both sides. You blacktopped the extra curb cut?
I, I, I blacktopped additional to the, uh, both sides, that's correct, yes.
And did you get approval from the town highway for that?
I, once again, wasn't aware, didn't, you know, the, the part that I put towards the right side was sort of in conjunction with what I was doing, and the part on the left side, there was, there's a tree stump there, which I thought, if I could just come closer to that, the tree stump would be more evident, yes, people had run over it, that's, so.
This is a rental house, correct?
Yes.
And the garage is also empty, you have a two-car garage, you could, they could park the garage instead of widening the driveway, correct?
Well, the garage is available to them to use, yes, that's correct.
But you chose to widen the driveway instead?
Uh, what's that, I'm sorry?
You chose to widen the driveway instead of allowing them to use the drive, the garage?
I, no, they're allowed to use the garage, I didn't make any, if.
Does anybody use the garage?
It's, there's, it's for their, it's there for them to use, and I just was there today, and I didn't see anybody using the garage, no.
Okay, so this is not your residence, this is actually a business more, more, more so than a, than your private residence?
Well, I'm.
You don't, you don't live there?
No, I didn't, I lived there. I'm the parent of two Marist students.
So this was done to help the Marist students park more freely?
That was our objective, yes.
Okay, so, again, my concern here is that we're turning the district into a, a commercial zone with all these driveways, I'm done right now.
Yeah, okay, I, I, when I was there, I, I paced it off, it was eighteen paces, and mine usually around three feet, so we're talking about a driveway that's, I think at least fifty feet. And then I noticed you also paved the, along the left side of the garage.
Yes.
Back.
Yes.
Yeah, so expanded the, the, um, the area back there. So it, 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 it looks to me like you've, you've got a, a parking lot there that would hold six or eight cars.
If I made the, the objective when I did that left side, I, I hired a landscaper. The previous owner used to cut the grass himself, and he kept a lawnmower and a shed in the back, excuse me. So there was no way for him to get back there, and also, that same person did plowing for me, this person went there. So he had suggested that, you know, you could, first of all, that was the fence that he kind of took down to get his equipment back there, just to cut the grass. And in talking to him, I was like, I probably should move that fence or do something, and he's like, yeah, and I could push the snow back that way, so I just thought it was a good idea, but once again, I didn't, really didn't think I was doing anything wrong.
Okay, all right, um, one of the, the, uh, standards that the ZBA is, is required to file by, by law, is in, in granting a variance to, to weigh the, the benefit to the applicant against any detrimental value or results that, that may occur, so, um, what is, what is the benefit of this expanded driveway? For you?
For me?
Yeah, why do you?
Uh, well, like I said, I spent money to make it easier for them to just be able to park, I, I, I don't use the garage.
Okay.
And if I knew I was doing something wrong, I would not have endeavored and be here today. I would have said, there's enough with the garage, like you, I guess, tried to point out, and I, I was already getting work done, I thought the extra six feet and the other idea was a good idea, that's.
Okay, so when the, when the property is fully rented, how, how many cars would there be?
Uh, no more than five.
More than, so, one for each renter?
Yes, if they have a car.
Okay. Okay, um, all right, um, the other thing, it, it came up in an, in an earlier application, is that the, the board must, is, is, is required to grant the, the minimum variance possible. And I noticed that in the, in the property, you have a large backyard, um, so, so you could run a driveway back to the backyard and have the parking there.
Well, I just put a fence up today, is actually what I did today. While I was, I don't intend to.
Fence running.
At the top of that, uh.
The nude paving.
The left side of the garage?
Yeah, at, at the end of the paving.
Yes.
Or there's now a fence there.
Right, and with a five-foot gate, uh, for the landscaper to get back there.
But in terms of the property itself, you could have parking.
I know that other, uh, air, you know, that, that has happened, and I can see on the block, that person next door, for instance, that's what they have.
Okay.
I wouldn't have even, like I said, I, if I knew I was going to be here today, I wouldn't have done any of this.
Yeah, no, I can understand that. Okay, Larry, any questions?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Okay, uh, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at Seventeen West Cedar Street? Okay.
I have another.
Yeah, sure.
The left side that you parked, the left, the paved, the left side of the garage, that has room, obviously, for a car, so you really didn't need to go to the right side and extend it. If they had just pulled in double, back-to-back, nose to, nose to tail, you could have done the same thing, where you already blacktopped, without widening it to the house.
I, um.
Correct.
I wasn't looking to piggyback two cars over there.
That's not the question I'm asking, yeah, the question is that you could, in fact, park two cars there, plus the three cars in front of the garage, without going to the right side of the garage.
Um, yes, I would argue that.
So the black, extra blacktop on the right side really wasn't a major necessity?
However, if you do look.
Convenience, not a necessity.
Yes, it was definitely done for convenience, for, I would consider it also a safety thing, because it is such a busy street, but yes.
I don't understand why safety, this, the driveways, the driveway.
It's like, I know my daughter lived next door last year, and I know that pulling out, she was, and several times that I went there, I found it to be almost a scary street to pull out to, so.
Making a wider driveway doesn't make it any less scary?
Well, I.
I understand where you are, you're on a, you're on the edge of that hill, and, you know, traffic does go fairly quickly, so you have to be observant.
Oh, yes.
But making it wider to negate any of that.
And I apologize, I, I hate to plead ignorance, but that's sincerely what it is, I did not mean to create any.
I'm all done.
Trouble.
Thank you.
Okay, um, there's no other questions from the board, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Uh, all right, do, do we want to do item number eight now?
Excuse me, is that this gentleman over here that's still waiting?
Yeah.
He's still waiting, right, this gentleman?
No, he's waiting for the decision on his.
That's what I'm saying.
Already went.
The special use permit.
Okay.
Okay, um.
I think eight can wait, uh, to the end, there's nobody here for.
Right. Okay, um, but do we have to, we have to open a public hearing?
No, this is technically a reapproval, and it's been asked prior to the board's, prior to the expiration of the prior approval. So in a similar way to how the planning board does its reapprovals, um, we, staff is of the mind that the board can do it as, it doesn't need to be a new, it hasn't been noticed as a public hearing, it is just a reapproval and extension, basically.
Okay, okay, if we don't have to do a public hearing, then fine, then clearly we'll, we'll wait. Okay, all right, so that, that concludes all of our public hearings. So we return to the, I, I mean, does anybody want a recess?
No.
Okay, okay, all right, uh, so now we're in the deliberation phase, um, item one's been adjourned, item two has been adjourned. Let's see, the church is not here, so I suggest we move right to number four. Christopher Rogers, Nineteen Sites Terrace. Okay, this is, um, an application for a special use permit to allow the re-establishment of an accessory apartment in a single-family dwelling. This is an unlisted action, um, but as I understand, just filled out the EAF short form. So I move that the ZBA declare itself lead agency for the purpose of the environmental review of the action proposed in item number four.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One recusal.
Oh, one recusal, that's right, okay, uh, very good, thank you. Um, I further move that the ZBA finds, based on the information contained in the EAF short form, that the action proposed in item number four will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Recusal.
Okay, okay, um, okay, since this is a, a special use permit, there's a number of, of things that we have to consider, and many of them are not really applicable, but we have to consider them anyway. Okay, the general provisions, that there shall not be any detrimental effect by the establishment of such use on other uses within the district. Um, I think it's clear, this is an, an apartment within the footprint of an existing building. It will have no impact at all on the, the neighborhood. That such use shall be in harmony with the orderly development of the district, and the location, nature, and height of buildings, walls, fences will not discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent lands. Again, for the same reasons, this will have no effect on the neighborhood. I, I might note, the board notes that along Sites Terrace, there are a number of multifamily structures, so the fact that this now is, is, um, a, a, a single-family house with an apartment is entirely consistent with the existing neighborhood. That all structures, equipment, and materials could be reasonably accessible for fire or police protection, this is a building code issue, it's been addressed. That the used meets required, the prescribed requirements for the district in which it's located, including minimum yard requirements. Again, this is the, an apartment within an existing, um, single-family house that's been there since nineteen forty-six, I believe, um, and the footprint is not changing. The board notes that, as stated on the application, uh, the, um, the proposed accessory apartments meets all of the specific criteria, including square footage, um, it has municipal water and sewer, um, and the, the only two changes, when was, was the home constructed, nineteen forty-six, and the, the total square footage of the apartment should be changed to six hundred and forty-one square feet. Otherwise, all the specific criteria for an accessory apartment have been met. There's also, um, performance standards, and the ZBA has to take into consideration each of these, but we are free to use our discretion in determining whether they need to be applied. Noise, the, the existing noise ordinance covers this, discharge of water, uh, the house and the apartment have municipal sewer. Traffic access, um, there's no interior roadways, so this does not apply. Parking, uh, the applicant has shown that there's room for at least two, and if you include the garage, uh, three off-street parking spaces. Five, circulation, again, there's no interior circulation. Six, landscaping and screening, um, the proposal will make no change to the existing, um, lot and, and house. Seven, character and appearance, again, it's an existing, uh, building and will not create any change or adverse effect on the general neighborhood. Historic and natural resources, um, there are none on the lot that are known. Nine, sewage treatment and water supply, um, both municipal water and municipal sewer, um, serve this property. Size and scale, uh, the existing house is certainly, um, consistent with the, um, other buildings and homes on the, on Sites Terrace. Location, the height of buildings, um, this is an existing building, so there will no change there. Additional safeguards and conditions, um, the, um, building department has reviewed the, um, the application, um, and, um, and made, and. and, um, and made, and has indicated the changes that need to be made to meet the code and fire requirements. Okay, having done all that, um, I move to approve the request for a special use permit put forth in item number four. This decision is based on the review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony gathered during the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and that it meets the criteria set forth in the town code, so move.
Second?
Second. Okay, uh, motion to approve the special use permit at Nineteen Sights Terrace, been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and one recusal. So, uh, permit is granted. Okay. Okay, um, all right, so item number three is Valley Christian Church, um, six fifty-seven Schaefer Road. This would involve variances to allow an existing building to be twenty-eight point three feet from the northern lot line and twenty-one point three feet from the southern lot line, where forty feet is required for each. This is, um, let's, let's see, has, has the, um, the planning board's already.
Addressed secret, right, this was.
Neg, yeah, okay.
Yes.
So, there's nothing to be done there. Okay, any comments, discussion?
It'll help you rid of an eyesore. It'll help you rid of an eyesore that's down there right now.
Well.
That hasn't been used in a long time.
Right. I, I know along the southern lot line, it essentially borders up against the back of a, it's like a warehouse or a distribution something. But I think you said that on the north.
On the north side, there's another parcel that's currently vacant that has been approved for apartments. They are actually working together, the two property owners here, to, uh, bring sewer, uh, to the area, which, um, so I, I believe that the, uh, you know, the apartments will be coming later, perhaps next year they'll start construction, whereas, uh, I think the church is ready to go as they get in.
Easter, they want services there.
Yes, Easter services was there.
Okay, so, uh, if there's no further discussion, Christine, do you want to do this one?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number three. This decision is based on a review of the applicant, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
The chair will set forth the findings, then?
Oh, I did not do that. Actually, what I would suggest is we use the findings.
Applicant's finding.
Provided by the applicant, um, which are, I think, unless anybody has anything to, to offer, I, I, I guess, um, I mean, I think the alleged difficulty, I mean, is self-created in the sense that they want to change the use of this, um, existing building, but that would, that would be the only modification that I would make. Okay, so, if we add on to the resolution that we just use the findings.
Findings in the application.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion to approve item number three has been made and seconded.
Paul, is that your second or Art's, I'm sorry, Art, thank you.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, recusals, okay, approve seven zero. Item number five, Jennifer Pasetto, uh, Twenty-Nine Schoolhouse Lane. This is a variance to allow a deck to be located seventeen feet, three inches from the east side lot line, where twenty feet is required. Uh, it's a type-two action, so there's, um, nothing to be, um, to be done here. So, any comments?
A portion of the backyard is shielded by the neighbor's, neighbor's building, and there's some additional screening on the neighbor's side that really minimizes any impact this, this might have, and it's in line with the house, so there's no greater encroachment on the side yard line.
Okay, all right, so let me, uh, propose as findings, um, as follows. One, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, uh, the board find that, because of the location and the existence of screening and the, uh, proposal to, um, add a, um, a screening wall, um, that, uh, the action proposed here, um, will not produce any undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method, uh, the board finds that because of the location of, of the house and the, um, the, um, existing, uh, let's see, it's, it's a pool, right?
Correct.
Yeah, um, that, um, there, there are, uh, there's really no reasonable alternative to the, the deck as proposed. Whether the requested variance is substantial, um, the board finds that the three-foot request is not substantial, particularly in light of the fact that the existing house is, uh, three feet from the property line, and so the, uh, existing deck, uh, will not, um, encroach further into the side lot line. Or whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the environmental conditions, uh, the board finds that it will have none. And five, finally, uh, whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, the board finds that it is self-created. This does not preclude the granting of the variance. All right, Paul, I guess it's your turn.
Sure, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. Decision's based upon the review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving, uh, this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth by the chair. So move.
Second.
Okay, uh, a motion to grant a variance, uh, for Twenty-Nine Schoolhouse Lane's been made and seconded. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, approved, seven zero. Item number six, um, let's see, that has been adjourned. And item number seven, Joseph and Eileen Hands, Seventeen West Cedar Street. It's a variance to allow a driveway to be more than fifteen feet in width. The, uh, proposal is, um, to allow a, um, twenty-one-foot-wide driveway, um, where fifteen feet is, uh, required, or, or where their maximum is fifteen feet. A type-two action, environmental issues too.
But it's more than twenty-one feet.
That's, yeah, how?
It's fifty feet. Almost, forty-five feet.
I.
Incorrect.
Don't know where that number came from.
Well, the number came from the fact that they added six feet to the existing driveway, so it's bad wordsmithing, but, um, because the existing driveway was wider than fifteen feet already, but what was added was six feet, so it's the variance to add the additional six to the driveway of indeterminate width.
Okay. Okay, um, okay, comments?
Just to, just to clarify, they just would have to get rid of six feet.
Six feet, the, the new, the new stuff he just put down, the six feet to the right, to the east side.
Closer to the house.
Yes.
What about the swatch that's going up behind the garage?
That's just an extension of what was already there.
Wider, just one longer, so, I guess. As a, obviously, you know, we live there, this neighborhood is more and more commercial every week. People sneak these driveways in, and that's exactly what they're doing, I don't care what they say. We've stopped some of them, others we have not stopped. It's for the convenience of the students, these people do not live there. Safety is immaterial, because I don't care if the driveway's a hundred feet wide, you're still backing out onto Cedar, which is dangerous no matter what your driveway is. So, this is strictly a convenience for the students.
So.
These are moneymakers for the owners.
So, they, he put forth in his paperwork many other driveways that are non-conforming. Is it likely that any of these non-conforming driveways will be picked up by the zoning administrator?
I actually asked Lisa something, at least it was something this, when I came in, that, and again, I am obviously unhappy with this.
I, I hear you, Art, I'm just.
No, I'm saying, we have, you know, I have, over the years, been trying to get the previous zoning administrator to resolve some of these driveway issues. We have stopped some in, in their tracks, because the equipment came in, we got pictures, and they stopped the addition. The thing I get back is that they're grandfathered, according to, to Lisa, you can't grandfather an illegal.
Right, if it was not able to be permitted when it was done, if it was a requirement, for example, that it was fifteen feet, and you then made it wider either without a permit or with a permit that was incorrectly issued, but without a variance, it, that doesn't get grandfathered. It would only be grandfathered if it was put in at a time when there was no zoning or the zoning was more expansive.
Right, so, we have, I know Mike's on the phone, I talked to him, he has had a couple of the driveways blacktop area removed over the past couple of years in other areas of Fairview, so it would be up to the zoning board to go after some of these people, you know.
You mean the zoning administrator?
Zoning administrator, and have them, you know, try to remove some of these driveways, because it, you know, he's doing it, he's pleading ignorance. The guy across the street has front yard parking, you got pictures of it. He, we stopped him three or four years ago, we, the zoning board, um, from, he had the equipment in there getting ready to blacktop. You know, zoning administrator back then went right out there and stopped that, so this is, this is just going and going and going, and to me, failure on our part not to make these people remove this is a failure to, to the neighborhood, to the residents. So, I don't know if that answers the question, but again, this is a business, these are businesses, as far as I'm concerned, these are not homeowners any longer.
I think it's a little different than the one we did a couple of months ago, where the guy had a two, two-car garage, and quite clearly he needed a variance to have a driveway that went to a two-car garage.
Slightly larger, right.
And, and this is different than that, he had, he had a, you know, driveway that exceeded the width that was permitted, um, and made it even wider.
But, you know, on top of that, again, the question when, I'm sorry, but when I asked, you know, the, on the left side of the garage, right, he went deeper. And we've heard this story before, why can't they park, you know, nose to tail, well, it's inconvenient. That shouldn't be our problem, that's inconvenient for these people to get out and move a car so you can get out. You know, and that would have been fine, just don't, don't go to the, the right, have them park, you know, nose to.
Right.
Tail, nose to, and, and use the garage, you got an empty garage, that's two more parking spots.
Or there is room.
Behind.
You could, you could.
Yeah, just because he put a fence up, right.
By the way, in the back.
Moved the fence.
And in fact, you could have places where people could turn around.
Have a, he could resolve all his problems with that.
Come out.
Backyard parking, yes, and he has plenty of yard back there to do.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a much, this one's a little different, because it's a much bigger lot than most of the, in that neighborhood.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, I, I.
Yeah, two hundred feet, Mo, from front to back.
Yeah, it's a, it's a major parcel.
I mean, we've had these over the years, there was the one on Spack and Kill, there was.
They crop up all the time, yes.
Right, right.
Our area up there.
Enforcement issue.
Right, but the Fairview area, because of the colleges, is, is probably the, the the highest, uh, area of this paving that we see.
Well, this application is before the board because of an enforcement issue, they have the.
Yeah, no, they, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, she acted on it, Mary, Mary, or.
Yeah, I mean, this is, is so clearly runs contrary to the code, I, 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 I don't see any way to support it.
And without regard to whether it's a rental or homeowner, it, the issue is the same.
Violation, yeah.
It's just, and, and I am completely unmoved by any, uh, appeal to neighboring parcels on the grounds of some kind of precedent, because, you know, if, um, if, if what we grant is contrary to the code, it's contrary to the code, and, you know, if.
And I think it does have, it is changing the nature of the.
Errors have been made, then that's, you know, the, just, just because other boards made a mistake shouldn't force us.
Sure they are.
Do something dumb.
And another thing is, uh, we've, many of us have spoken on many occasions, um, that lack of enforcement is very frustrating. If this comes before us as a matter of enforcement, then I don't see that we can grant it.
Okay, what I, what I'm hearing is that, uh, the majority for denial. How do we structure this in terms of a motion?
You can make a motion to deny.
And do we have to then do the findings?
Just having it maybe clear, though, that the denial is not going to make a twenty-one-foot driveway, but rather just to remove.
The new section.
The addition, right?
Okay, so two different questions, the first question is, um, yes, you need to do find, what you need to establish is the balancing test, that the benefit to the applicant is not outweighed by the detriment to the town.
Okay.
So, that's the analysis that you need for that, and then to answer your question, the, it should be, um, as it's written in the denial letter by the zoning administrator for the additional six feet of newly-installed driveway, the expansion of a driveway.
So, the order to remedy actually would be, should be, the remedy would be different, right, it's not bringing, not bringing the driveway to.
You know.
Because that's.
Just removing the new.
It's not entirely clear from the, either the order to remedy or the denial letter, what the existing driveway was and when the paving on the left side was done.
That has been there for a few years, there's no doubt about that, the curb cut should also be put back to the standards, because.
Well, to, to me, it's pretty clear, you are therefore directed and ordered to restore driveway to a width of no more than fifteen feet, or apply for a variance. So, it seems to me what, what he should do, I mean, the, the, the extra six feet is, is. Gone. But to come back and apply for a variance.
For the, for the west side.
For, for the driveway, for a driveway that matches the existing garage. Or, you know, if he's feeling lucky to further extend it to, to the left.
I think to.
But that's his choice.
Allow the zoning department, the zoning enforcement, and, um, the greatest ability to do whatever it is, whether they say it has to be returned to fifteen feet or some other number that they deem appropriate, I think that the board should deny the requested variance for a driveway larger than fifteen feet, and then just leave it at that, and let the zoning administrator, the zoning department, the zoning administrator sort out what exactly was there, what they're willing to let stay.
That works for me.
Okay.
What's out there now is fifty feet.
Right, so it's not clear to me, as we sit here, whether the zoning administrator, or the, the code enforcement officer, whoever's doing the enforcing, will require only the removal of the six feet, because that's the newer, and say that the other part has been there for a while and can stay, or just not enforce it, or whether they will require a fifteen-foot driveway, but I don't, it's not for this board to say that. The only thing that's before the board is whether the, you can widen more than the fifteen feet.
But we can ask them to remove those curb cuts, because that's also a violation.
Was that new?
Um, I don't think.
He added curb cut on both sides.
Yeah, I just think the highway department's probably got the.
Right, that, that.
It is a highway, still, do we not have any?
I don't think we...
We can't...
Well, you have, I think you should...
I don't know.
This board should absolutely note that, that it's not proper for that to be done, but it's not for this, we haven't been asked to, anything about the curb cuts, so that's for the highway department to say...
Flag it over to Mark, then.
Right.
That would flag it for Mark to look at, Mark Pfeiffer.
Right. I mean, I assume that when this is for enforcement, I think, would think that the curb cuts would be part and parcel of the enforcement.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, all right, so the, the motion is to deny the request in item number seven to allow a driveway to be more than 15 feet in width, okay? The, the board finds that the proposed change will produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The board notes that the, the neighborhood has, for a long time, consisted of single-family detached houses, usually with lawn or other landscaping, and that the action proposed in item number seven would remove all of this and replace it with a flat asphalt surface. Furthermore, the board notes that this has produced a very large increase in the impervious area, and as many studies have shown, increasing impervious areas has undesirable consequences for drainage and for groundwater. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method, the board notes that the lot in question is very large and that there is suitable area in the rear for the parking of additional vehicles. The board further notes that there's a existing two-car garage that could house some of the vehicles for the renters of this property, but is apparently being unused, so the, the board believes that there are alternatives. Whether the substantial request, whether the requested variant is substantial, the board finds that is very substantial. The width of the existing driveway is approximately 50 feet, and the code allows only 15 feet. Four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical and environmental conditions, the board simply reiterates the comments in item number one. The existing, the existence of impervious surfaces is, has clearly negative environmental impacts. Five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, the board finds it's clear this is self-created. Unbalanced, the, the board notes that the benefit to the applicant is far less than the detrimental effects it has on the character of the neighborhood and the environment. The board notes that the benefit alleged by the applicant is largely the convenience of the person renting the property, all of whom have automobiles that they wish to park in the, in the most convenient way possible. Okay, so I move those as findings?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, I guess, Art, I guess it's your turn.
I move that the board deny the request for an area variance set forth in item seven. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public, and results of site visits by board members. Denying this variance, the board adopts as findings those set forth by the chair. So moved.
Second. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to deny item number seven, there's no further, so the, so a, a aye vote is a vote to deny. Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recusals? Okay, denied, seven zero.
Phil, is that a question?
No, not at all.
Oh, okay, all right, so now we're to item number eight. So, I don't know, Mike, do you want to just sort of bring us up to date?
Very quickly, yeah, so this is, you've seen before, I believe more than once, but this is the project out on Violet Avenue, 297 Violet Avenue, called Beacon Residential. Basically, what's happened is last September, you approved these two variances, they had work to do on their site plan, they, and I believe there was another set of variances that somehow got unhooked from these two, and so those other two still are in effect, but inadvertently, these two have now expired while we've been waiting actually to get the final signatures on the plans by the planning board chairman, so they're all set to go, they've actually got a building permit application in, and we looked and said, wow, those two variances are now, you know, just expiring, and so it's kind of, some of it's our fault, it took a little while to get through the final review of the drawings, because we've been very busy this last several months, and so, you know, I would ask for a little deference on this, and if we could just grant those, again, if we can get them off on their way, and I think that'll be the benefit of everybody, so.
There's certainly been no change that would affect our findings from the original...
There's no change at all.
Approval, so.
So, simple motion to re...
Motion to reapprove.
Okay, do we have to do the environmental separately?
No.
Okay, so I move that the CBA approve the...
Reapprove?
Approve the reapproval, I don't know.
I vote that the board reapprove its prior variance.
Reapprove the variances and the environmental review as set forth in item number eight. Okay, unless there's any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay, so...
Thank you.
They are ready to...
Build, build it.
Yes.
Sure.
Right, that brings us to the end of the agenda, there's no further discussion, I just wanted to add, James had his surgery and is recovering, and I hope we will see him the next time, but we certainly wish him well. Otherwise, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.